I like this hammer. The June 24, 2025 School Board Special Meeting and Workshop is called to order. Mrs. Tresky, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Apehl.
Here.
Mr. Cherry.
Here.
Mr. Link.
Here.
Ms. Quintana. Ms. Trigg. Mrs. Watkins. Dr. Jamison.
Thank you. We appreciate everybody who's here this evening and those of you who are joining us via the live stream on the Division's YouTube page. So, this evening, we'll move right on to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented?
Ooh.
Second.
Second by Mr. Link. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're short staffed tonight. Everybody's gonna have to, you know, do all the moving in a second. Is there a motion and a second to approve the personnel list as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Members of Apehl, second by Mr. Cherry. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Freeman, who is joining us this evening, do you have any announcements to make?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, to those that are watching us by Facebook and YouTube, and those that are joining us here tonight. We are pleased to announce that Ms. Stephanie Davis has been recommended for and has accepted the position of Principal of Morningside Elementary School. She will officially begin her new role on June 25, 2025, meaning tomorrow.
Yep.
Ms. Davis currently serves as the Assistant Principal at Grandin Court Elementary School. She brings a wealth of experience and a strong educational background to her new position. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Mass Communication from James Madison University, a Master of Education in Elementary Education from the University of Virginia, and an Education Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership from Virginia Tech. Prior to her current role as Assistant Principal at Grandin Court Elementary School, Ms. Davis served in the following roles: Administrator, Special Education Coordinator at Benjamin Franklin Middle School in Franklin County; Instructional Coach at Suntag Elementary School in Franklin County; Third-Grade Teacher at Wendy Gap and Lee M. Wade Elementary School in Franklin County; A Teaching Assistant at Preston Park Elementary School in Roanoke City. These diverse experiences have equipped Ms. Davis with a strong foundation in both instructional leadership and classroom teaching, making her exceptionally well-suited to lead Morningside Elementary School. Please join us in congratulating Ms. Davis on her new role.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Jamison, Madam Vice Chair, Mrs. Apehl, members of the board, student representatives, and Mr. Freeman. Thank you for the opportunity to serve as the Principal of Morningside Elementary School. I look forward to working with the students, parents, community, and all stakeholders to ensure that we focus on utilizing our resources to provide effective first instruction for all students. As the Principal of Morningside Elementary, my vision is to create a positive and inclusive school culture where students and staff feel safe, valued, and genuinely excited to come to school each day. I believe when students have a sense of belonging, they are empowered to engage deeply in their learning, grow with confidence, and reach their full potential. As a servant leader, I'm committed to increasing student achievement and supporting our teachers by providing the resources and the respect they need to deliver consistently high-quality instruction so that every student has the opportunity to thrive. Our goal at Morningside Elementary will be to cultivate critical thinking and academic excellence while supporting students' overall well-being. We will focus on literacy, academic growth, and mastery to ensure that all students achieve at high levels in alignment with the revised strategic plan. Morningside Elementary will be a place where families feel welcome, students are challenged and supported, and where every learner is given the opportunity to build a strong foundation for future success. Thank you again to the School Board and Dr. White for this opportunity. I am truly honored to serve as the Principal of Morningside Elementary and excited to begin the important work ahead.
Thank you. That's exciting news. So, this evening, we're gonna go to the superintendent's reports, and anybody watching can see that we have Mr. Freeman, and we're delighted to have you this evening. Dr. White and members of the staff are actually presenting at a conference right now, so we are delighted to have you. Mr. Freeman, would you please provide the superintendent's reports this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, Madam Chair, and good evening again to everyone. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of the superintendent this evening. Tonight, we're bringing forward several items for your information and consideration. These include the approval of the amendment to the 2425 General Fund Budget related to dispersment of employee bonuses, the approval of the plan to distribute employee bonuses, an update on student health services, an update on cellphone and wearable electronic guidelines, a first reading of policy revisions, and the quarterly update from the Office of Constituent Services and Government Relations. Before we get to our agenda items tonight, a few highlights and items for the board and the public's information. We had a great first week of our summer program last week and are excited to have many students back in our buildings this summer. As a reminder, I do want to mention there will be no school next week, June 30 through July the 4th. Additionally, registration is still open for our Stay in Safe by Stayin' Connected Summer Camp, which will take place the week of July the 21st, and that registration is available on the RCPS website. I do want to mention that if your students were already registered to come to our summer program, we know we've had individuals reaching out to them to still come to the program. They are still able to come, so please make sure you call the school. You can call one of our teachers, one of our administrators. We do have an opportunity to still have our students still come, even though we're still further along in the program already. So, the STAR program is still available to those that were originally invited to be part of the program. I encourage our families and staff to attend one of our Summer Stock Academy performances of The Little Mermaid Jr. later this week. Our students have been working hard for preparing and learning the show just in under two weeks of rehearsals. They will be performing Patrick at Patrick Henry High School on Thursday and Friday evening at 7:00 PM. We do want to take this time to say thank you to our fine art supervisor, Whitney Johnson, and the many parents, staff, and high school students who are working so hard to support our 5th through 8th graders in this program. And finally, I am pleased to share that the Virginia Department of Historic Resources has approved the RCPAS's applications to place the original Lucy Addison High School, which is the location of our new Community Empowerment Center, on the Virginia Landmarks Register and National Registry of the Historic Places. That is great news. They will be installing a historic marker in honor of Ms. Addison outside of the building. So, we do want to take time to thank the School Board for your support of these projects as we work to honor the building's history and educate the public for generations to come. The marker will take place, take several months to manufacture, and we'll provide more information later this fall about a special dedication ceremony. We are also excited that the main Community Empowerment Center sign is being installed this week. So, if you happen to drive by on the Orange Avenue intersection, look up at the hill, you will see that the work is happening. And as Dr. White often says, it is happening. And we are very excited to be putting the finishing touches on the building to begin services in July. And I do want to personally take this time to thank Claire has done an excellent job. So, on tonight for the 2425 General Fund Budget Amendment. So, to begin our report, I will ask Kathleen Jackson, the Chief Financial Officer, to come forward to present details regarding an amendment to the current budget's general fund. If approved, this would allow for bonus funds to be distributed by June 30.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Freeman, and good evening, Chair Dr. Jamison, Vice Chair Mrs. Apehl, members of the School Board. As Mr. Freeman stated, in anticipation of the School Board approving the plan to move forward with the bonus funds distribution that we've received from the state by June 30, this budget amendment does not change the total budget, but it does move funds between categories just to make sure that we have the right money in the right place to accommodate those bonus payments. The vast majority of our staff, of course, fall in the instruction category, so we are proposing or requesting your approval to adjust our budget to reduce our Administration Attendance Health and Technology Categorical Budget by $1 million and increase our Instructional Category Budget by $1 million. We do have the ability to do that through some cost savings, some salary lapses, and some positions in administration that have not been filled for the entire year, and some savings in health insurance costs and that sort of thing. So, those are the main reasons why we have that availability, and so that'll just help us be extra sure that we have the budgeted funds in the right place to move forward with that bonus.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. So, before we ask for a motion and a second, are there any questions you'd like to ask from the board at this time? We talked about this at length at our last meeting. Everybody feel... All right. Is there a motion and a second to amend the 2024-2025 General Fund Expenditure Budget as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cherry. Again, is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. I would now ask Ms. Jackson to basically stay there to present information regarding our plan for distribution of the bonus by June 30, based on the board's discussion at our last meeting.
Yes, excellent. Thank you. So, now that we've made sure that we feel confident we have the budgeted funds in the right places to move forward, we are bringing to you this evening for your approval the plan for moving forward with those bonus payments for June 30. So, as we discussed last meeting, we do have a state funding that was calculated at an average $1,000 per standard of quality position. Of course, we have many more positions than that. So, our proposal for you this evening, based on the discussion last meeting, would be to distribute the full amount of state funding that we have received to support bonuses. It's just over 1.45 million total distributed to Roanoke City Public Schools to distribute just that state funding by June 30. We will certainly look at where we are budgetarily with any funds that might be remaining available as we close out the 2425 school year and bring that back to School Board for further discussion if there is funding available that we might be able to look at to try to get us up closer to that full $1,000 at that point. But at this point, of course, because it only is calculated based on standards of quality positions, and we would propose providing a bonus to all of our employees who meet the qualifications, the bonus amount at this point would be closer to about 550, maybe a little more than that, for full-time employees. So, that's our proposal. At this point, use the state funding to provide a bonus to all employees who meet their qualifications, not just standards of quality positions. We propose that employees who have signed their contract to return, because this is stated in the state code or the budget bill, to be intended as a retention bonus. So, employees who've signed their contract to return to Roanoke City Public Schools in 2025-26 will qualify for the bonus. Employees who service Executive Director, Assistant Superintendent, Chief, or superintendent-level position do not qualify for the bonus. So, those are the criteria set in place, and if that is amendable to the School Board, we would ask for your approval, and we will move forward.
Very good. Are there any comments or questions for Mrs. Jackson? I gave you a degree.
Well, I did wanted to just make a comment, just saying thank you. I know we had to make an adjustment to make this happen, and I know it was a tight squeeze to get it done by June 30. And I just want the public to know that we did have to move some things around just to make sure that this happened. But we will, just wanted to clarify that we will be getting closer to 1,000 in the fall. fall, just depending on what's left, you saying?
We'll certainly look to do that if we can. It's a little too difficult at this point with the year not quite closed to know for sure. We're fairly tight on the budget this year, so don't have that level of knowledge or confidence at this point in the process to be able to say with certainty, yes, we can put some local money in to try to make this better. But once we're working through the closing process and get into August and September and have a better idea of where things are settling, at that point, that would be an appropriate time where we could bring this back to the school board to discuss if it's looking like we do potentially have some funding available on the local side, then we could come back with sort of a round two to try to get that bonus amount a little bit better for employees.
If I may, Mr. Cherry, I was in agenda planning, which for the public is just a few of us trying to actually get the meeting together. We discussed that only do this part of the motion so that if there's money, it'll come back to us for another discussion.
All right. Now, I definitely do want to, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I did watch, wanted to thank all of the parents and the teachers and the staff that did come to speak up. At the end of the day, we are here to hear your voice, and your voice does matter, but I, you know, just wanted to make sure I pointed that out because I wasn't here, and that we do continue to be and try to be as competitive as possible when it comes to compensation. I think as a division, we've done an incredible job since I've been on the board of a lot of staff raises, even with a tight budget, we're still given a raise. It's not as substantial as previous years, but it's still something. So I just wanted to point that out again. Thank you for your work, and I think I've talked too much.
Mr. Link, any questions or comments?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Very good. I have one quick question, and it's a for-later question, I suppose, would be if there are funds available when we have finished truing up the budget, and if we have hired any new employees between now and then, would they be qualified for the new or the bonus distribution? And maybe that's, we'll talk about that as we go.
That would have to be part of that discussion and decision about what the qualifications would be for receiving any additional bonus funds at that point.
Which first, we need to know if we have any money for that in the first place.
Yes.
Very good, very good. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion and a second to approve the employee bonus distribution plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Link. Is there any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good. Thank you for making that happen. I echo all the thanks, and thanks for everybody who made their voices heard. We're excited to do that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and please thank your team. So we know we worked extensive hours in order to make this happen for June the 30th. We're very appreciative of that. Next, we will have our Chief Operations Officer, Mr. Chris Perkins, to come forward to present an update on the future of our student health services in regards to student nurses.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I come today with an update and a recommendation following the Corrigan's or Corrigan Clinic's unexpected decision to discontinue oversight with the Corrigan School Nursing Program. Our proposal, let's just get the bottom line up front, is to bring the nurses in-house. So this, the proposal that I will bring into you will also help us maintain continuous nursing services as we move forward. It's crucial to note that Corrigan's decision does not reflect on the excellent performance of our nursing staff. Their nurses maintained full coverage throughout the 2425 year, contrary to some people's belief, with an oppressive 3% absenteeism rate. That is below the national average for healthcare, so our nurses did a great job. So I'm very happy that we will have the opportunity, if approved by you, to bring those, that fine staff on board if they choose to do so. Bringing in-house services, as we recommend, stems from careful consideration and market realities. While Corrigan has been in a unique position to provide nursing services through an outsourcing program and a valued partner, our last request for proposals in 2023 yielded minimal and cost-prohibitive results. The only other proposal we received was almost a half million dollars more than Corrigan. So that indicates there's limited external interest in school nursing as an outsourced possibility. So therefore, an in-housing model is the most realistic and cost-effective path forward. Our financial analysis projects that an in-house model will cost approximately $3.15 million. That's including personnel and non-personnel costs. This is comparable to our estimated Corrigan Clinic and Student Health Budget for fiscal year '26 that has been approved, which is just over $3 million. Corrigan has committed to a six-month transition from through December 31, 2025, providing a crucial lead time for us to implement our plan. During this period, July of December, we will focus on robust recruitment. We have worked with the Human Resources Team, Dominic McKee, to establish some job descriptions and processes on how we will conduct the recruitment, developing specific RCPS policies and procedures. The pediatric director has agreed to a full year from Corrigan to help us with this transition. So that's great. And occupational health services is going to remain with Corrigan. They wanted to do that. We also want to ensure a seamless continuity of care. So our goal for RCPS nursing staff is to be fully operational by January the 1st, 2026, and we will work closely with Corrigan for a smooth transition for our staff and students. So the ask, at our next board meeting, we respectfully request your approval to bring school nursing services in-house, and I'll take any direct questions you may have.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Perkins? We'll start with you, Mr. Link.
Um, maybe. First off, at least in an informal poll of seven-year-olds in my house, the nursing staff in RCPS Plus gets very high marks. She thinks very highly of Nurse Monty at Granite Court Elementary School. Is there any opportunity to keep, based on their familiarity with our student population, is there an opportunity to keep the personnel that we have and bring them in-house as?
So in our plan of implementation, we are, we want to keep our nurses.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if they choose to come on, we want to keep them in the schools that they're currently in.
Yeah.
And we believe that there has been, there's been enough contact that we've had with the existing staff that we believe that we can make that happen.
Wonderful.
Of course, they have to go through a process for us.
Sure, sure, sure.
And while we know Corrigan has a process, in order for us to be, you know, in line with what we do for all RCPS personnel when they're hired, we have to go through a background and a hiring process. So we will do that. But working with Mr. McKee's team, they have really refined the process for hiring through some extensive experience in their job fairs, and so we're going to follow that similar process where we can make offers if approved prior to the background. So the offer would be given pending a background investigation.
Thank you.
Cherry.
Oh, that was the same exact question. My daughters have grown attached to the nurses we have as well at Highland Park, so they always make them an excuse to get a Band-Aid, so.
I was going to say.
I'm glad to hear that we are going to try to do some retaining of what we have. So you answered all my questions. I appreciate it, as always.
My only, like, question is kind of logistical, is, you know, if this impacts, you know, if we have to vote for any sort of budgetary reason or categorically, if, you know, we have to move something from one category to another, if we're, but if, so anyways, I don't know if you can answer that now, or we wait for till next month?
So in the process, and we've looked extensively at how we can do this financially. And while most people think outsourcing is a cost savings, as you've heard me say, we're just slightly above what we have currently budgeted, and, but that includes some contingencies because you don't know what you don't know. Because remember, we haven't had our own nursing services for a long time in Roanoke City Public Schools. But the good thing is, we have a lot of processes in place, we have a lot of experience in place that can work through this with our, with the Corrigan team that have been good partners with us. It's just a focus change for Corrigan on what they're going to focus on as a, in their industry. But I think we can do this, and with that contingency factored in, at 3.15 million, I think that is extremely consistent. And when I saw the final figures when we worked it out, I felt really good about it, and I won't speak for Ms. Jackson, but I think Ms. Jackson felt good about it as well.
Yeah, I'll just say, so, I mean, that estimate is slightly higher than what we have budgeted in that particular cost center budget at this, at this time, but it's very close, and so it doesn't bring me pause at this point. Certainly, we'll watch it closely as we work through this process and hire folks and really see, as Chris said, we don't know what we don't know, as we start to hire folks and where they fall on pay scales and all of that. Certainly, we'll keep the board informed if it would require a change to our budget, but at this moment, I don't expect it to.
That's actually along those lines, what I was thinking about as I was looking at you, Mr. McKee. Is the reason for the year-long support from the pediatric nursing manager?
Pediatric medical director.
Pediatric medical director. I mean, recruiting for nurses is an entirely different specialty now. Is that part of the kind of support we're going to get?
No, we're going to depend on our HR team, but we're going to, we're going to, go ahead.
Well, just in terms of knowing which networks to tap, I mean, you know.
Yes, we're going to lean on their knowledge in regards to where to look.
That's the kind of thing, they're going to open a chain of conversation with you.
Yes.
That's.
But we will use our marketing and everything like that in terms of where to find nurses, but our main goal is to, of course, hire as many nurses as we can as quickly as we can.
Yeah, and I ask mainly because I know how hard you've worked on the where do we find them channels for all our other employees. This is a, this is a brand-new category of where do we find them?
Yes.
So that was, and this is just a, will they then be on 10-month contracts? Will it be a combination of 12, 10, and?
It'll be 10, 10 and 1/2.
And 10 and 1/2? Okay. Okay.
Let me clarify. It'll be for the school-based nurses, but we will have a supervisory team that will be at 12 months.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. That's what I said. I think those are all my questions. Are there anything? That's exciting. Thank you. You all got on top of that really quickly, so thank you for finding a resolution. Yes, Mr. Link?
I have a curiosity. How long has it been since we had in-house nursing staff?
At least 10 years. I think 2015.
Okay.
Yeah, well, before me, yeah.
And, and you get that report, sir, since you're new to the board. That comes in December in the outsourcing report. And I'll have the exact number of them.
I can't wait.
So, very good. Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Our next item is regarding updated cell phone wearable electronic device guidelines for our high school students.
Are you going to walk out there and talk about it?
Well, Dr. Jesse Mazer is actually going to help me tonight. Dr. Jesse Mazer, the Executive Director of our alternative programs, Student Accountability and Special Projects, will assist me with presenting this information and update this evening to the board and to the public. So we thank you all for this opportunity. And I'm just going to start off by saying a few things because some of the information we're going to give you tonight, I wanted to bring it to, we wanted to bring it to everybody's attention to make sure that we bring it back to the public because we had voted, and we've also made the changes, and now we're moving forward. So of course, this is our off and away for the school day, understanding the new RCPS cell phone guidelines. You have the clicker.
Would you like it?
A few things. Thank you. I just wanted to remind the public that we was informed last year in July the 9th, 2024, in our school board meeting, we went through a lot of information where we reviewed current information regarding the use of the cell phones. We provided a recommendation, take that time to Dr. White and to you all regarding the policy update and changes if there was needed, a recommendation on what we were going to do next, and logical consequences. I do want to take this time, before we get any further, to thank the task force, the group, work group that has been working diligently, that has been consisted of administrators, teachers, parents. We've had multiple meetings. You'll see the meetings listed for this school year, but there are some from past school year also. So on August 13th of last year, we made a recommendation based off the Governor's Executive Order Number 33, and during that time, the cell phones were actually one of those that was away during elementary and middle school. And then at the high school level, we was making it available, excuse me, during lunch, and we also made it available during classroom transition time. So we did ask for an update and approval during the December the 10th board meeting, and since then, we've had multiple, multiple task force meetings in order to address where we're at, where we need to go, what will be the next course of action, even looking at options on how we can make sure we are enforcing the logical consequences. And we've had that trial run during the school year. We did see that discipline, we have not did a breakdown of the discipline versus cell phone, but we did see discipline decreased this school year, which you'll get an updated report when we do our data report, of course, with academics. But we also referred back to some of the research that we had stated earlier in the year. The Executive Order Number 33, as we all know, in 2025, General Assembly passed the House Bill 1961 and Senate Bill 738, where it requires school divisions by law to adopt policies that restrict student cellphone and smart device use, meaning bail to bail. And of course, Roanoke City Schools is committed to creating these learning environments where students can stay focused, be respectful, and ready to learn. So as required by the code, we must restrict students' cellphone and smart device use throughout the entire school day. So to comply with this, we also started this summer, starting with our summer high school program, making sure we go effectively, that we would not have any cellphone use during the day. So it is bail to bail. We know this is going to be an adjustment for all of our students at the high school level. So those that are watching, parents, we need your help and support. I know Dr. Mazer is going to mention it some more, too, as we're moving forward with even the new school year. There are some themes regarding logical consequences that you're going to hear. There's also information regarding how we're supporting the staff, supporting the administrators, and we actually started our Leadership Academy with principals and assistant principals today for the next two days, and then we have another one again in the month of July, and we will briefly touch on cell phones, but there will be additional information that we'll be providing to them. So when it looks like cellphone-free, what it looks like in practice, all devices must be silenced and stored away during the school day. That means, yes, you can have it on the bus unless it's distracting the bus driver or causing an issue on the bus, then they cannot have it on the bus. But right now, it allows us to have it on the school bus, but when you get off the bus, when it starts their first bail, cell phones should be put away until the end of the day. With that being said, I'm going to let Dr. Mazer now take over. Right there, no, no, right there.
So good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the work we've done in support of cellphone-free school environment, certainly an important initiative. I'd like to begin by discussing how students will be informed of the guidelines, and ideally the information shared about the expectations of the guidelines will be a review for students. However, to ensure, sorry, here we are. However, to ensure that there's clarity and consistency, we will begin the school year with student orientations, where the guidelines will be introduced or reintroduced at the start of the school year, and the guidelines will be delivered through grade-level assemblies or school-wide assemblies, reinforced in the hallways, through posters, and in the classrooms, where our staff will model and reinforce the expectations of the schoolwide guidelines. We also recognize the need for strong parent and guardian partnership to support this important initiative, and students and their, and their parents and guardians must sign off on the guidelines as part of the RCPS Code of Conduct. Additionally, to support a strong school-wide implementation, schools will provide and grant a grace period. In fact, that grace period will extend into the first two weeks of the school year, where students will be reminded of the policy and provided with verbal warnings. And this is aimed, of course, at supporting a smooth transition to full enforcement, which begins in the third week of the school year. When full enforcement begins, we will use logical consequences, progressive series of consequences, when and if violations occur. The first offense, the device will be taken by the classroom teacher and returned at the end of that, that period. Parent will be notified, and that incident will be documented in synergy. The second offense, the device will be stored and held in the office, the parent notify, and the student will be able to retrieve their device at the end of the day. In the event that there is a third guideline, a referral will be generated. Parent must pick up the device, and the student parent will sign an acknowledgement of further consequences, basically working out an agreement that's mutually acceptable for the parent and the student about what will happen in the event of a fourth offense, which could include keeping the phone at home, locked in an office. So how will staff be supported? And I'd like to point out, as Mr. Freeman noted, that we've worked all year to develop a toolkit or a series of resources to help support our staff in implementing this initiative. And that includes a rationale for the guidelines, which talks about the goals and the purpose of, of our cellphone guidelines, FAQs, to help our community understand the purpose of the guidelines. We've created We've created scripts for our administrators when violations occur to share with, to share with parents. We've provided talking points for various grade levels, high school, middle school, to help our administrators explain the guidelines in an age-appropriate way. But I think we all know the success of this initiative is really going to be predicated by the entire school system modeling the guidelines, and of course, consistent enforcement of the guidelines. And that includes total and shared accountability for everybody and by everybody. That said, we, we also recognize that the enforcement of this policy may likely lead to challenging interactions, and it's essential to keep those interactions both positive and constructive, to the greatest extent possible. And in that spirit, and as part of the toolkit, building administrators will provide staff with guidance in responding to misconduct. And schools will also retain discretion on how they choose to manage enforcement systems, documentation, parent communication, within a con, within the common framework of progressive discipline. However, there are some universal postures that will really help enforcement and minimize lost instructional time. And we're really going to encourage our staff to, to avoid power struggles. We want our staff to, to stay, to stay cool in these interactions and recognize that you don't need to engage in a direct conflict with the student, there can be delayed consequences, allow the student to know that the office and the administration will be informed of the violation in due time. Remain calm and be brief, use a calm and, use a calm tone and nonverbal, or I should say, neutral body language, and keep your responses short and non-confrontational to reduce the potential for escalation. Of course, when dealing with misconduct, we want to provide our students with choices, encourage students to, to make good choices and follow the, the guidelines, offer choices not ultimatums, encourage responsible behavior, remind students it's never too late to make a good decision. And, you know, ultimately, this is going to be a year of learning as we implement these guidelines, and schools will be encouraged and supported in developing systems, and we hope to learn from our schools in terms of the effectiveness of the systems that they do, in fact, develop within their sites. So a year for all of us to learn as we implement. This slide is really an internal document, or an internal slide, I should say, for, for our staff. It really simply reiterates the consequences, one through three, the progressive consequences. And number four provides a little bit more nuance in terms of identifying the resources and supports that are available to our, to our staff in the event that they encounter noncompliance. And that concludes how we're going to manage this, this initiative for the summer and '25, '26 school year. Any questions?
Let me share just a little bit more information in regards to communication, and I have to again thank Ms. Mitchell. I don't know if you've probably seen the social media posts and reminders in regards to the cellphone use, and of course, we've read some of the comments. There's been also listed under the social media post, but this is also, as we know, something that we must do to be in compliance, but also we want to make sure that we're providing those tools, like Dr. Mazer stated, that our teachers have what they need, the principals have what they need, to have the tools needed, to have success in the classroom and to manage this. We do know that there will be, yes, discipline will probably be busy for the first two weeks of schools with reminders. Some of them would test it. Again, this is where we need our parents to be able to work with us in partnership, and I think that acknowledgement form that's part of that toolkit will be able to assist us in making sure we get this through. So there will be some, some days that'll be challenging, but we'll work through that.
Thank you, Dr. Mazer. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Questions from the board? Mr. Cherry, I'll start with you.
No, no questions. We have a plan in place, so like you said, it is going to be an adjustment. I think, you know, the first couple of weeks of school is always challenging, so I think we are in good shape, and I appreciate you all's update on this policy.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
One, I wanted to, I think I heard it at a central council PTA meeting, but what, can you, Mr. Freeman, can you remind us the policy on if a cellphone purportedly gets damaged when, when it has been confiscated at school? Because I think that was when I first heard, you know, heard clarification.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Apel. So to let you know that as part of actually our language and the student code of conduct, that if we confiscate anything, it's not going to be a liability of us.
That, that's accurate.
It's written in the code for the signature. But that's why the parents have to have that acknowledgement form and notice. We try and put everything out there in writing, and we think Mr. Collins, I think, assisted us with this, too, to make sure, because if it's taken, it's not going to be the liability of the school system nor the liability of that individual.
And secondly, I know part of the reason, you know, we were looking forward to this update is to see how it is going in summer school for the high schools, because the, the elementary and middle have had this policy in place, but this is new to the high schools. So how is that going anecdotally?
Someone asked Dr. Poland to come up. She's been overseeing some of the high school pieces for the summertime.
Good evening. We have had a few little bumps in the road. We do have our high school students who are participating and attending this summer are students that do maybe struggle and need some additional support, but they have been very compliant. We are really encouraging our, our staff to make sure that we are engaging with our students, that we're encouraging them to either finish their work or, you know, to be engaged in class, and we have really found that that has worked. Our administrators have been very diligent. We started with our faculty, making sure that they knew, you know, hey, no cellphones, even at the middle and high school level, and they were very receptive, so we started that from day one. We don't want to see staff phones unless there's an emergency either, so that has been very receptive, and we have, we've not had any major concerns or issues this summer. And so we have about 170 high school students at Fleming this summer, so it's going pretty well. That's a small number compared to the 2000s.
Yes. Any other questions? I mean, I think it strikes me that this year, our kind of pilot run before full implementation has gone relatively well. Is that fair? I, listen, I gauge this by how many emails I am or am not getting, so that's my only metric. I didn't hear a whole lot about this. What, what, big pictures, this, in terms of the, the canary in the coal mine, we can maybe understand, have a better sense of what to expect.
Well, I would say that we had a lot of conversation in our work group. We have to make sure, and I think Dr. Mazer said it too, first, it starts in the classroom, and Dr. Poland mentioned it, the accountability has to start with the teacher enforcing, but also the teacher not being on their device at any given time, too.
Oh.
So we have to make sure of that. So there'll be some layers here for, in order for us to be fully enforced in the fall. Let's just be realistic, all of us are glued to iPhones for some reason. So we have to make sure that the adults in the classroom is enforcing the policy, teaching with full instruction in the classroom, effect their first instruction, and then making sure they're holding the students accountable, and we, as the administrators, are holding the teachers accountable. So that's why we've created this toolkit to have a whole new process to make sure. For those who probably weren't getting a lot of emails, we heard some concerns, but as we were hearing them, we were making sure it was being addressed.
That, that strikes me as a successful process. I mean, if that's what's, I mean, not that it's perfect, but that it is being intervened in along the way. So that seems successful to me. Good. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate the update and good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Mazer. Next, I will ask Dr. Alan Seibert, the Constituent Services and Government Relations Officer, to provide a first reading of the policy revisions.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, I encourage you to get your handy-dandy little reference guide. This is a work of policy and regulatory art that Ms. Tresky has put together. You have these, do you have these handy?
Do we, did we get it last time?
Nope.
I don't have to read it.
Should be at your faces.
I do not have one here with me.
Should be at your faces, sorry about that. Okie dokie. Well, good evening, also, Mr. Freeman and colleagues, attendees. Thank you for the opportunity to present the first review of drafts, policies, and regulation updates. As you all know, this board subscribes to Virginia School Board Association's policy service. The policy service maintains a model policy manual that is updated both by section to ensure that the entire manual is reviewed every five years as required by Board Policy BF, and also that when there's changes to Code of Virginia, case law, or best practices. The summer update is generally the largest and most significant because it includes all the required pieces from the 2025 General Assembly that the board is required to implement. First, I want to thank the division leadership team and Superintendent Policy Governance Legislative Committee, including Dr. White, Ms. Quintana, and Mr. Link. Their work was extensive and will save you a lot of time tonight. Also, the work by the division leaders and their teams have, has been very extensive. We've gone into the weeds, the PGL committee and the team, in over 80 policies and regulations. Their diligence permits me to summarize 180 pages of updates tonight, hopefully very briefly, to the extent possible. I do want to point out, and this is something you often ask me to remind those who might be watching, we do aspire to maintain the copyrighted VSBA versions whenever possible because that gives us an extra level of legal protection. And then what you'll see in several cases is where we are moving some local policies into VSBA language, we're creating local regulations to maintain the local flavor, to make sure that we're keeping things working there. Aspiring to be brief this evening does not minimize the importance of this work. Policy is right up there with your budget and your employment of people to what you do to help the division operate well. This is first review, and we would ask if you have any questions or suggestions, certainly try to entertain them tonight, but if you have feedback, we would ask that you have them by July 2nd if possible. Division leaders who are continuing their work, Board Attorney David Collins is also reviewing this assembled set of updates before we request adoption in July. Special thanks to Board Clerk Kim Tresky for organizing this quickly and doing the challenging work of rendering all the input from all the different offices into board docs. It is not a user-friendly tool for editing, editing information. The booklet in front of you contains over 60 substantive updates to policies and board regulations, and notes approximately 20 other non-substantive changes in legal references, cross-references, and just language pronouns, et cetera, that have already been reviewed and advanced by the PGL committee. In a few instances, VSBA has recommended new policies, but thankfully, in more cases, our local review of wholly local policies has allowed us to delete over 15 outdated local policies and that we found were redundant or perhaps even out of step with the VSBA copyrighted language, and so we are recommending those be removed. We're actually hopefully deleting more than we're adding. I wish the General Assembly would do the same thing with the code. I will focus our attention tonight on the first 10 pages of your booklet of the summary charts. These are the pieces required by General Assembly language, and then we'll conclude with the five-year review of local policies. So starting there on page one, you'll notice as you go through the first 10 pages, there were, General Assembly had a lot of emphasis on student health and safety, that's understandable, but lots of language in terms of how we manage our crisis management plans, our threat assessment teams. You have brand-new policy about opioid antagonists, then having them on hand to keep them in stock. That requires that Jill Jeter's team come up with regulations, soup's regulations, on how we're going to maintain that stock and to keep track of those things. Safety drills was also tweaked, new concerns about high-temperature events and CPR, CPR and AED devices, and how we're going to have them at events, including games. All those things have been addressed, and the policy and the team is working on implementation. Moving over to page three, we get into some other things about contracts and substitute teachers. There was a number of code sections that were changed that affected both employee, people who we can employ, and people who our contractors can employ in terms of what are barriers to employment. That, that standard was softened a bit, but mainstream aim that was anything endangering children or moral perpetuity was covered. On page four, we get to professional staff development. The General Assembly is always dabbling in professional staff development. This year, however, they did move more toward recommend it in May, that you can, and a lot of things they do, we already do, and there is, have language now that we may do what we already do. But they have invited the Department of Education to create an index of required teacher training. They figure before they keep adding to teacher training and/or as they have plans to limit how much training we can do locally, that maybe the department should index what is actually currently required. So that, that's going to be interesting to see come forward. When you get into page five, you see a list of IEP considerations, and all candor, these are things that our IEP teams already are considering for children, but now they're required to be considered, so policy is adapted to, to think about those things as well. On page five there, you have one of your new policies, IGBJ. That's a brand-new policy to rep, to cover some code that came out about helping encourage young people who are performing at high levels, get into advanced coursework, but there's some, some opt-out provisions for families there as well. On page six, to bring us to where we just were with Mr. Freeman and Dr. Mazer, JFCM. That is a brand-new policy, and that is student cellphone and smart device possession and use. This policy is the VSBA model, but it has a section to implement to insert the language that was just presented to you earlier. So between now and when we come to you for final adoption, we'll be able to insert the language that the task force, Ms. Freeman, Dr. Mazer just presented, put that into the policy and have it ready for you for adoption, for consideration adoption on July 8th. As we continue, and on over to page nine, you know, there's, Wesley Williams' team is always working on how we use student devices and, and service providers. We obviously keep student data very, very secure. These are some new requirements for the vendors that, that we work with. Then get over to page 10, there was just some updates to some other policies, and that brings me to the top of page 11, which is interesting. You're required in policy to review policies every five years. You're required to review a couple of things every couple of years, but review is different than adoption. You have two policies that the code requires that you adopt annually, and those are on the top of page 11, BDD and BDDL, and this is about electronic participation in school board meetings. So when we ask you to adopt the policies next month, you will be renewing the adoption of those provisions. In the middle of page 11, you see a list of policies that VSBA reviewed but did not update, so the review date on those changes. You also see a large set of policies that the PGL committee looked at that were non-substantive changes. Your policy already permits the clerk to update cross-references and legal references as those come through. When we get to the bottom, bottom half of page 11, we move into local board policy regulations for update. So the team is always reflective and learning from practice and learning with good experiences. So for example, you have a, a new board regulation, and this is about bus scheduling and routing procedures. This just puts into your policy manuals a regulation under governing policy, the, the really robust and sound processes that have been in place over the past couple of years and successful. You have a brand-new GBEABR, alcohol-drug-free workplace. This was Board Attorney Mr. Collins worked with HR to identify an area that we probably needed to bolster, and so that is accomplished with that board regulation. Moving over to page 12, we get into the set of five-year reviews, and this is where I really want to commend the team for very thoughtful work to look at wholly local policies. Many of them have been, although they were reviewed five years ago, they were adopted times before that, and so it becomes a careful process of do we still need this and why? And what you see here, there's a number that have been revised, some are the becoming board regulations to anchor them into the VSBA policy, but we have at least 15 that we're recommending be deleted. These are, again, wholly local, outdated, often redundant policies. In some cases, they're actually conflicting with the VSBA model policies to some extent based on interpretation. And moreover, it's better for your policy manual that people, for example, don't see a reg, a policy on, oh, we prohibit discrimination based on 504 status. Well, we do, that's covered in our discrimination, anti-discrimination policy. So having it in two places actually is problematic for users and readers of the policy manual. So you see the reflection and the recommendations of the team there, and then again, at the bottom of page 13, you see there were a couple that we decided to leave as were. Then your next 170 pages are the red lines of each of those in the summary chart that we encourage you to take a look at, and again, if you have any questions, come up, let us know, but they're organized by section, so you have the VSBA ones first, where we're pretty much have very little flexibility of what we can and should do because they're out of the code, and then what we recommend with the local ones and why. So that's the policy updates for first review, and if you have any current questions, happy to answer them, but also, Ms. Tresky will receive your feedback before July 2nd if possible.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Seibert this evening? I would just, I feel like we do this every time you speak, but I would just like to take a minute and tell my young board members how lucky we are to have you, because when I came on this board, you probably remember, about one workshop every other year, we got 400 pages in front of us that we were expected to have read, and we were, go through, and did you see it? It was the longest workshop meetings we've ever had. This process is, and it's, this has got much more, much thorough integrity to make sure we're consistent than when you do that sort of work. So thank you so much for implementing. So thank you so much for implementing this kind of approach and process. We were always reviewing them, but this makes me feel much more confident about our overall policy consistency.
Thank you, but the team brings the expertise and Kim does all the work.
Well, thank you to all of you involved. So, all right.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. I would ask you to remain at the podium to provide your quarterly update on your office.
Okay, hopefully at your place, you also have your handout. The handout is a little different this month because it does not have the chief trends on the back, because like we did last year, we're giving this slightly before the quarter ends. So we want to give them the ample opportunity, and we will update that in the form of a memo. But I'll go to my presentation. So a couple of things. First slides, you're very familiar with, but we do this at your direction to keep the community informed, that we have the Constituent Services Office. It is in accordance and alignment with International Ambos Association standards of practice and how we operate the office. We also built out a very thoughtful, robust approach on how we approach concerns. And this is because we don't, we want people to have places to go to get help and have their concerns heard, but we never want to disempower the schools and the people who are doing the work. So we expect people to start at the schools. We expect our principals to help people start with the teacher, and it's part of the process we have to begin at the source, but then know that there are some people that can help you. And specifically in office, if you don't know where the source is or what policies might be involved, we can help you with that. So Constituent Services, you have a policy K.A. that requires that we have a protocol and a feedback system. Part of the things we did during the Policy Governance Legislative Committee meeting last week was to look at alternatives to the current ethics point that we use, and that was received well by the committee, and it has been endorsed, and we'll be moving forward and probably bringing you some more demonstrations in the future of what we think will be a better tool for the future. But using that current tool, the community feedback system, in the last quarter, which again, a little short, through June 20th, a number of cases decreased from quarter one from 11 to nine. This is actually a decrease from the previous quarter, previous year, quarter two in 2024, of 15. So that was, so again, normally things in my office and in the reporting system heat up at the end of the school year. Promotion, graduation, contract renewal, those things heat up. And also at the start of the school year, there's lots of activity there. Those are usually, but the community feedback system had less. Continue to be responding to these in less than 24 hours and resolving cases in an average of 4.7 days. Some take longer than others. Some we do the day we receive it because it's pretty straightforward. Some require investigation and work from the team. Visits to my office increased from the first quarter. Again, that's not uncommon. That was up to 73. It's also more than it was in the second quarter of last year, however. Visitors remain primarily employees by parents, and we also had a pretty good increase in partner agencies. At the end of the school year, lots of organizations reaching out, curious, who do I talk to? This is what we can do, is what we're curious about. Visits were email correspondence, phone, and I'm moving from saying office visits or school, I'm going to move things just to workplace. That's by and large because of this building, this opportunity where I serve, it might not be where people would want to come for a confidential visit. So I'm actually moving more of those to alternative locations, including at the CEC, where we still have space, where it'd be a more discreet place to meet with someone who has something they want to share. So here's what you have on your handout. 100% of your feedback, of your community feedback system cases were web. This is important. Over the years, it's been well over 95% have been web-based because the new tool we're looking at would be entirely web-based. The expectation would be that if you want to make an anonymous thing, you would need to use the web-based tool. But of course, people do occasionally call me and don't want to tell me what their name is, and that is fine as well. But the phone option of Ethics Point would not be in the K-12 insight piece, but it's very underutilized, and we think part of the cost factor that Ethics Point brings. Again, largely employees using that tool to remain anonymous. In terms of outcomes, we did a lot of those, some of those are resolved in less than a day or a day, it's because they were suggestions. And so people are happy to provide suggestions anonymously. We still give them a response. And then in some cases, we do take the time where it's necessary to conference with an employee. That was the biggest action taken in the last quarter. In terms of visits to my office, again, school workplace, I said that's going to be my new nomenclature for meeting with folks, and again, largely employees, and again, high resolution rate. I did update, sometimes the board had questions when I refer something to a best point of contact. I wanted to ensure that, in fact, that I check in with those people, that resolution was achieved. So I've renamed that referred and resolved to make sure that the follow-up was done. And in general, a lot of these are inquiries. You see an action taken, answer provided, that's what's necessary. A large number of no-action requires. Some people just need to be heard, they need to talk things through, they want to brainstorm and have a thought partner or something, and at that point, they can choose if they want to do a formal process or informal process or things like that. And then all, again, administrative reviews means we take a look at how we do things and best points of contact. So those are the highlights of the last quarter, and then here you see the graphical trends. Again, the use of Ethics Point has continued to decline and remain pretty low. This is another reason why we think for the expense of that tool, we can bring a new tool to bear that will serve more parts of the organization. And then visits to my office spiked again in the second quarter, just as they did in the second quarter a year ago. So anything on that before I move into government relations?
That's great. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you go back one slide? I was just curious about why, like I know, forward one, I think I might have, with the graphs, your little line graphs.
Okay, gotcha.
I think it was your second last slide. I was curious why, like I compare the year prior, and I noticed that the Ethics Point cases went down compared to quarter two a year ago, but the other ones went up. And I was like, you know, typically, they kind of seem to trend the same, but then I was, so I was curious if you had an explanation of that. But what I also, I'm wondering actually if the total is the same, but people feel more comfortable communicating with you as opposed to being anonymous? Or I don't know if there was something in particular, because usually if there's a flurry, there's a flurry in both.
The anecdotal piece would be is that it's gratifying, professionally gratifying, that many of the calls I receive begin with, someone told me I should call you. And so I think that word of mouth has been helpful, that people are suggesting other people to give me a call. And yes, the 73 was identical this time last year in terms of office, but we did, we ended at different times, so.
Gary.
Okay.
All right.
And your Policy Governance Legislative Committee, in addition to doing 80 policies and regulations, also received an update on where we are. So we met on the 16th, we did the policy work. We also are moving forward with getting prepped for your legislative policies and positions. So that will be the work of the committee coming up. In particular, we're looking forward to Dr. White is still serving as Legislative Chair for Region Six, and she will be hosting in conjunction with Dr. Hicks from Salem, the Region Six Super Trans Luncheon with Legislators. That is going to be on August 4th. That's our first bite of the apple. That's the administrative side. Then we're looking right now at the first, maybe that week before Thanksgiving, as your target date for your luncheon, your coffee and conversation with your legislators to prove that your position's out there. And so we feel good about that. The other things the committee talked about were two. One, I'd already shared that we looked at using a new tool versus Ethics Point as that contract comes to a close, what we could do there to have a different tool, get more features. And secondly, Advanced Strategies, who's been your consultant for a number of years, has had a change in staffing. Kathy Burcher's moved on to other things. Emily Webb is extraordinary, she's moved into that role. But we're thinking critically about, again, the value proposition of that cost level of service. Maybe there's a lower level of service we could negotiate with them. That's something the committee will be working on as we head into the fall. Any questions?
Questions? I have just a, is that luncheon with legislators, legislatures, a little bit later in the summer than it was previously?
Yes.
I was thinking of in terms of timelines, it seems like we're going to be getting that a little bit later than we usually do.
So July is turning out to be a very heavy travel month for legislators, especially when they want to be back in time for supporting election season and whatnot. So July is very heavily traveled, but already what we've found, and this will be true for us in '26, '27, as school divisions are starting earlier, although that date worked with many of our legislators, has been problematic for some of our partner school divisions because it's during their convocation and things.
Right.
So one of the things we already have on the draft agenda will be to look at June probably for 2026.
That makes sense because I'm remembering the full legislative calendar that we use internally, and yeah, that makes sense. Good, thank you. Penny? Very good. Thank you, Dr. Seibert.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. Madam Chair, that concludes the report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman. We will go on to the work of the board. We don't really, we will be meeting again on July 1st at 5:30 PM to have a bit of a mini-retreat where we can talk about, well, we'll be talking about some items related to many of these things, and we'll talk about more about that then. But basically, it's just to get our shop in order on July 1st to have some conversations as we go into the new year. This is the last school board meeting of this school year, and the next time we meet, we will be into the next school year officially.
Wow.
I know. Are there any questions or thoughts before we move on from the board? All right. Well, with no further business, oh my goodness, meeting is adjourned.